Welcome to tonight's meeting of the council. Before we start tonight, I would like to ask everybody to remain standing and join me in a minute's silence in memory of Peter Ward, former Mayor of Shover, an attendant, and former councillor David Wilcox. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, everybody. Just like to request all members, when speaking during this debate, please use the microphone quietly. Now proceed to hear your rights and wrongs on the council's summons. Apologies for absence. Councillor Slack, councillor Jill Cross, councillor Ollie Cross, councillor Garner, and councillor Hacking. Are there any more apologies or absence this evening? Generalities from two. Does any member wish to declare a disposable community address or real green address in any master before the council meeting? No? Thank you. Now move on to the general rights from three. Can I ask members to approve this direct record in the minutes of the annual and ordinary meeting of the council on the 9th of May 2024? May I have a proposal? Councillor Alton?
Move the Mr. Matt Hatt, Mr. Cheyenne.
And the second one? Councillor Luke, thank you. Any corrections or anything to add? No? Thank you. All those in paper? Yeah? Anybody against? Abstaining? No, few is correct. Thank you. Now move on to the general rights of four. May I ask one question? Thank you.
Well, I suppose I'll start with an apology from councillor Garner. I know if you could, it would be case I, unfortunately, you can have a problem with me. As a reminder, the Mayor's Civic Dinner will take place on the 7th of March 2025 at Glossop Golf Club. It's a great opportunity to support the Mayor's charities. So if you can attend, please do. Yeah, that's all the others we've got. So thank you very much.
Thank you. General rights from five. General rights from five. Leader of the council announcements.
Thank you. Since we last met for the annual meeting in May, the new Mayor of the May Authority governing our area, EMACA, is now up and running. We've had the third board meeting most recently. Included among them in that third meeting was the appointment of a deputy mayor. The Dean of Deepfield, the leader of Derby City, has been appointed as the deputy mayor along with portfolio holders, which are from the constituent or member authorities of the Combined Authority, and deputy portfolio holders who are from the district representatives of the Combined Authority. The board meeting also considered the process to start the development of a number of regional strategies for the Mayor of Authority, including a special development plan, a local growth plan, and an inclusive growth strategy, along with an inclusive growth commission. And we're going to start appointing a business advisory board and how those members would be collected together. The December meeting of the Combined Authority will be taking place in the High Peak on the 16th of December. Just a couple of bits to note. Helen Cole, who many of you will, I hope, know, our head of housing, is leaving the Authority after many years of service at the end of the month. And Matthew Arthur, who has been our interim head of assets, is also leaving the Authority at the end of the month. And his replacement, Vicky Mitchell, starts on the 28th of October. For information, the revitalising Buxton workshop session scheduled for the 9th of October is having to be rescheduled as some of the people that we need there are unavailable, and a new day will be advertised shortly. You will have been offered, or you may not have been yet, on behalf of the Sustainable Hayfield Group, councillor Jill Cross has got copies of Walks from the 61 Bus, Lee Cross. Just walk, sorry. Yeah, copies of Walks from the 61 Bus, Lee Flit, which I'm sure she'll be happy to give you, so you'd like to distribute them. And that's everything. And our other, the missing strategic director, who'll be covering community services, Anna Eastgate, has also started. She started with the Authority on the 18th of September. She would have been with us this evening, but she's currently in the process of doing a corporate challenge up in Northumberland. But I know arrangements have been put in place for a number of walkabout sessions, and she's going to be making her way around to introduce herself to both staff and to councillors. So if you get a message or a contact request, that's part of the reason why. That concludes my announcement. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Joe. Now move on to the general rights from six. Questions of which no sees has been given. I have received no sees of two questions under council procedure rules. One question has been received from members of the public, one from councillor Okinson. A copy of the questions, together with the answers, has been circulated. She's ordered the questioners to ask one supplementary question that may arrive out of the original question or the reply. Maximum building design questions by the Public Council meeting in 15 minutes, they may be extended, the minus question. Question one, Mr. Right.
Thank you very much for taking my question. Shall I read it out, or would you be taking it red? The original question?
We'll have a copy of it to read, thank you.
Okay, so in terms of a follow-up. Firstly, thank you very much to the executive councillor for her detailed response to my question, which I appreciate. I do feel I need to point out, though, that the figures for additions for the cement quarry industry, which you refer to in paragraph four for response, are explicitly excluded from the data that I quoted in my question. And indeed, had they been included, the figures would have been very much greater. Because the question referred simply to those emissions that are under the direct influence of the council. I'm aware, of course, that the council has declared a climate emergency, and there are a number of follow-up actions that have happened as a result. But the fact is that they are simply not enough. The emissions, as you can see in the data I put in my first question, emissions just aren't coming down in anything like the speed that they have to in order to reach our collective ambitions to reach net zero. The Tendall Centre for Climate Change, very respected academic centre at Manchester University, has calculated that High Peak Borough Council needs to be reducing its emissions at a rate of about 16% per year. At the moment, it's barely 2%, depending on how you calculate it.
Could I just ask you this question?
Yes.
The answer, or is it a statement you're making?
No, I have a question, which I'm coming to you just now. The question is, not what are you doing, but what else are you going to do? Because what you're doing today is manifestly not enough. So what else is going to be done?
Thank you, Mr. Right. Councillor Thot wish to reply or reply as soon as possible?
Yeah, well, we're extending all kinds of things. We, for instance, the, there's another leisure centre that we'll be putting self-cannons on. There's an event that we have planned for October 22nd, when we're all going through all sorts of different subjects. Such as textiles, possibly wild gardening. We haven't actually got a fixed agenda yet for that. But we are continuing with the strategy, and we have the strategy. The plan will be updated at the end of the year, sorry, before the end of the year, in November. We're working with all the partners that we have, the High Peak Green Network, biodiversity groups. I believe you're a member of the High Peak Green Network. And we're continuing with what we've said in the answers to the question, basically.
Thank you, councillor Thot. Now we want to the next question, which was received from councillor Adrian Okinson. Have you all read the question? Have you asked supplementary?
I'd like to read the original question, because the public wouldn't have seen the original question, if possible. I think it's been on the website, that people here may not have heard it. I feel it's benefited us, because otherwise, it's clear with lacking responses that have not been answered through emails, and I think it's in the interest of openness and transparency.
Is any members of the public here who wish to hear the question? No? Is any members of the public who wish to hear the question? It's been published, so that's you, councillor Okinson. You can ask a supplementary.
Okay, that's fine. Well, in response to that, then, I just wondered how many councils here tonight have actually read the summary of the Grantham Inquiry Report? It does make mention of councils and the environment with fire regulations. Persuasion of the lack of information provided to councillors as a result of this question being submitted, I'm sure the leader and deputy wouldn't have issued the press release, which was state, which stated good progress was being made. This should have been open, Glossop, market election by Moulton, Erich, 2024. I have emails from the deputy here, deputy chief exec, saying that the fire escape, which was approved in April, would have been installed by June the 11th. This has been, this project has been a huge error. There have been errors made. It's quite clear because there's a window where this fire escape is being installed.
I'm sorry, that's the question.
Which is going in the bin. Now, put it to the question. That would have been purpose-made window and not been cheap. Can councillors please be provided with a copy of the original fire strategy and the comments from the Irish Fire Service, as well as the leak control tracker, which is mentioned in the reply? Otherwise, what are the officers of High Peak Borough Council hiding from councillors?
Is anybody, Mr. Thot? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I think it was difficult to identify sort of a question amongst the, amongst the little bit of ramble from councillor Okinson. I think I'm disappointed that you're trying to associate market development with Grantham, which I think is an appalling connection to try and, try and make. I think many members will appreciate, and the council has extensive experience around sort of historical developments. As members, particularly those longer in the tooth will be aware of the Crescent development. Whilst there might be an original grand plan that starts off, quite often these type of buildings bring their own challenges and additional, some would say, opportunities. If you speak to the executive director of procurement, he speaks of them less fondly, and in quite often shorter words, which are probably not appropriate for a council meeting. From the process, the officers are trying to keep on top of sort of making sure that we make the best progress as we can. But the fact that these works started off as one thing, and because extra funds became available partway through that process, the job has changed and evolved. And whilst, you know, these lovely sort of semi-Victorian buildings or on the edges of Victorian building times were made available to us, some of the things that are sort of form-bearers did in the 50s and 60s were not necessarily helpful or sort of fully documented. So when we've done parts of the works, the plans have had to change to sort of meet those opportunities and come across them. In terms of sort of the particular issues that are mentioned within the question, as the scheme has sort of developed and evolved, we've taken advice appropriately for a power should building control from the fire authority, and their assessment has moved forward. I think part of the challenge has been that there's one or two individuals, perhaps in the local area, that have sought political opportunism while, while sort of spreading a few rumours around scrupulous systems being installed, not installed, having to be reinstalled and things like that. Who knows? I think, yeah, office hours are working to try and ensure that the building is brought to a close, brought to completion as soon as possible. And the information that we're able to make available at this point is being made available in answer to the question.
Thank you. I'm glad that, you know, just on the side note on that, with the big problems. Thank you. We want to get rights of seven. To approve the recommendations from the Audit Redress Committee, external sparring club 2003 to 2004, annual treasury management report 2003 to 2004, treasury management update, I understand the recommendations will be moved and brought. May I ask a proposal, please? Councillor Matt Taylor?
Yeah, very quick one, Chair. It's 2023, 2024, not 2003 to 2004.
Thank you.
May I have a proposal?
Thank you. Seconded, councillor All. Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in paper? Anybody against? Anybody abstaining? Motion discouraged. General rights made, appointment of substitute independent persons. Councillor, would you?
Thank you, Chair. I might move the recommendation. As members, particularly those on the Standards Committee, will be aware, we've gone through various recruitment processes to try and get additional independent persons to deal with, and the standards complacent are coming to our councillors. The most recent recruitment round, we didn't get any additional people. But what we're looking for is to make sure that there's a backup person in case that current person is unavailable. And the recommendation that's been put forward this evening is that we utilise the stature of allens, independent person, in the event that our own person is either unavailable or not able to deal with a particular complaint because of any particular connections. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Pira?
Second motion.
All those in paper? Anybody against? Anybody abstaining? Motion discouraged. Thank you. General rights denied. Keep the notice of motion, changes to the winter fuel allowance, and protecting pension units from fuel poverty. Proposal is councillor Bluebeath. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think I should read the motion article. Okay. So the Labour Government's recent decision to restrict winter fuel payments only mentioned as the receipt of means test benefits, such as pension credit, is announced by councillor Rachel Reeves. They estimate the impact of this decision, which AGK says will mean two million pensioners who badly need the money to save all this winter will not receive it. The significant role winter fuel payments play in helping elder residents in High Peak and across the UK afford heating during the COVID months, thereby preventing the need for heat dialers and safeguarding health. Criticism from AGK, Countryside Alliance, and other charities highlighting the social injustice and potential health risks posed by this policy change. The additional strain this decision will place on vulnerable pensioners, many of whom will not claim pension credit despite being eligible. The government claimed that pensions do not require the payment is far outweighed by many thousands who say it just above the cut-off for pension credit and will now lose their allowance. The decision to means test winter fuel payments, especially with such short notice and without adequate compensatory measures, is deeply unfair and will disproportionately affect the health and wellbeing of our poorest older residents. Increasing pressure on the older over-stretched hospitals. The government's approach fails to consider the administrative barriers and stigma that prevent pensioners from claiming pension credit, leaving many without support they desperately need. We request that the council lead right to the councillor of the Exchequer, urging a review of the decision to means test winter fuel payment, and asking the government to ensure that vulnerable pensioners, particularly those who do not claim pension credit, are protected from fuel poverty. Further, commit the council to sign the safe winter fuel payment for struggling pensioners, petition being run by AGK, and write to all members to sign the petition for themselves. Encourage local efforts to promote uptake through the council services and partnerships with local charities and community organisations in High Peak are supported in claiming their entitlements.
Councillor Okinson? Will you second the motion?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Is there any amendments? Do you? Thank you.
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment. Sorry, I would like to propose an amendment after the first request to insert. We further request that the leader of the council ask the chancellor to review all benefits to people of pension age and associated application processes to make pension and benefit system and application processes better and simpler.
Councillor Ruben?
Yes, we are prepared to accept that amendment, as proposed by councillor Collins.
Thank you very much. Councillor, would you?
Thanks, Chair. The Labour group will not be supporting this motion or any amendments made to it this evening. I believe it's a bit of political opportunism. We believe the council has had a good record of cross-party of working to try and ensure that its residents are able to take up annual opportunities for any areas of benefit work. And we'll be hoping we will be bringing forward an updated cost of living report to make sure that whatever measures, whatever additional measures we can put in place to support our residents, not just pensioners but all of our residents, in making sure they can access any entitlements from the government of the day, they're able to get those in place. We hope that when the cost of living report goes back through the committee process, I'd hope it would be constructive input from all parties that are in the chamber in terms of sort of, in case there's any measures that are missing out in terms of the updated report, but also if there's any opportunities locally that members want to take. I know there's been a number of suggestions around sort of local, local ward events to try and assist broken signing up for either pension credits or other elements around this. Thank you, Chair.
You want? Oh, sorry, councillor All, that's first, put to you then.
Thank you, Chair. I was prepared to second the amendment, but I think Linda is doing that in her agreement to put it on to the original motion. I mean, 17,739 pensioners in High Peak don't receive pension credit. 4,411 of those aged over 80 in High Peak are at risk of losing their winter fuel payments due to these cuts. Previously entitled to £300, and energy bills are going to go up £149. I can understand the Labour group not wanting to support the motion, but equally, I would hope each and every one of them is contacting the treasurer and making their feelings known that they think that this is a ridiculous imposition put on our local residents. I mean, it'd be bad enough if we actually lived somewhere warm, but given that we live in High Peak with temperatures which are probably one or two degrees colder than Birmingham, then it's going to have a greater effect on those people in High Peak, perhaps in many other places in this country. So I'm more than happy to support the original motion, and I'm equally happy to support the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Collins?
Yes, I just wanted to give some explanation about this. Governments propose remedy for a budgetary allowance is to apply for pension credit, which is extremely complicated. It's also, people have talked about a cliffhedge. In other words, if people have paid all of their national insurance contributions bar one year, they will be entitled to pension credit if they've paid all their, although very little pension credit. However, it's a gateway benefit, which means that they can get over £10,000 extra in certain circumstances as well as the pension credit. So that's an extra £10,000 going up to £17,000, I heard, through that aim, because it's a gateway benefit. The person who, the other person who has paid for their national insurance, now we get pension credit, so they don't get those extra benefits. In other words, the whole of the benefits system for pensioners needs to be looked at, which is completely logical, and abolishing the winter fuel allowance, as you can say, very much a mummy, probably, as well as dispossessing. Some are poor people, and some people who don't have the capacity to apply for pension credit.
Thank you. Councillor Pira?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in the 1980s, when I was a student, we used to debate motions like this one. Usually, it would be some brutal dictator who would receive a stiff letter from the student president, asking him ever so politely to stop killing people. I mostly let other people do the talking, as I sat and thought about whether the postal service was still functioning in those countries. And if it was, at what level in the bureaucracy would the letters be thrown in the bin? So it's with that ambivalence that I approached this motion. I'd like to thank Joanna for supplying her amendment, which goes some way towards adding practical consequences for our elderly neighbours. I had hoped that if the Labour group was going to amend this motion into a praise poem for the council and the government's policies, they would have retained Joanna's changes, with which I'm sure everyone here agrees. When the rest of us were writing hyperbolic speeches, pretending to be important politicians debating an issue of national importance, Joanna was thinking about her neighbours. Thank you for being humane, Jo. My 15-year-old daughter is currently a student and taking her English GCSEs this year. For her Shakespeare play, she's reading Macbeth. I'm sure we've all been in her situation, where the close study of a play will spoil its enjoyment for a decade or more. It's a shame that everyone has to go through the ordeal, because it's a great play ruined by our school years. At one point, Lady Macbeth turns towards her husband and says, "Yet do I fear thy nature; it is too..." "Yet do I fear thy nature; it is too full of the milk of human kindness to catch the nearest way." She's criticizing Macbeth for the sympathy he's shown to others, which is damaging to his own political ambition. And that's what we're debating tonight. During the election campaign, the Labour Party made commitments towards the city of London and international financial markets. Now, pensioners are feeling the sharp end of the stick. The chancellor's thirst for power has overwhelmed the bonds of kindness we should all feel towards each other. The milk of human kindness has dried up for our frail elderly neighbours. I'm sure that many borough councillors who campaigned for Labour's victory felt a terrible shock from the policy to withdraw pensioners' winter fuel allowance. Most of us here have chosen our political party because it seemed like the least worst option to get elected and help our neighbours. Of course, there's probably a few true believers amongst us, but they're the oddballs, not us. I doubt there's a single councillor here tonight who would have campaigned on this policy, no matter how much they prayed for a Labour government. It feels like a deception, a switcheroo, the epitome of the ends justifying the means. Like Lady Macbeth telling her husband to look like the innocent flower but be the serpent under it. You have unwittingly fought an election on compassionate change but realised too late that the love of power is corrosive to our better emotions. Keir Starmer and Rachel Reeves will take any decision demanded by the markets so long as it guarantees their continued positions in government. The contrast has been stark between MPs' own financial arrangements and the cruelty they are willing to impose on our neighbours. Last week, I tried to calculate how much my clothes have cost over my entire lifetime. And it came to far less than the thirty-two thousand pounds Keir Starmer has spluffed on suits over the past two years. He's living in a land of milk and honey and he's not alone. They're in it for everything they can snatch: power, money. They'll sell their credibility for a couple of concert tickets. While the milk of human kindness has dried up for pensioners, these MPs are squeezing every last drop out of the parliamentary tit. But who can my elderly neighbours complain to? The local MP, John Pearce, voted for this wicked policy. How can they contact him? Where is he? Does he even live here? No one's seen him since he was elected. He's paid close to a... Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
He's paid close to a hundred thousand pounds to be our MP and no one believes that he's moved here. As far as I can see, he must be using long-range telepathy to represent his constituents' views. It's three months since the election and John Pearce's constituency office hasn't been open for a single day. Over the past couple of weeks, you can feel the weather getting colder. Pensioners are already making decisions about whether to turn on the heating, huddling up under a duvet or getting out of the house to sit on a warm bus. John Pearce doesn't even have a phone number for his office. If you want to complain, get yourself an internet connection. That's what they're telling my elderly neighbours. One hundred thousand pounds. It's a salary that few can dream of, but of course, it's not just a hundred thousand pounds, is it? That's just the start of it.
Thank you. Five minutes is up.
And sharing those expenses are three borough councillors who are staffing his locked and bolted office in Chatham. I urge you to support this motion tonight.
Who's next?
Surely it's a pound of flesh, not a milk of human kindness?
I've seen many versions of Macbeth, but never one like that. And, you know, we've got to care frankly about FP's taking donations. I mean, the previous entity, one of the first donations he got was from pretty close to it. Is there anybody else who wants to speak or? John, we say as well. Yeah. Yeah. Linda?
Thank you, Chair. So quite simply, the Conservative group stands by the request that the councillors across the way sign our motion. The withdrawal of the winter allowance is sudden, without notice, and people have not had time to make other arrangements, even if there were other arrangements available to them. So we'd like to move to the vote and like a recorded vote, please.
Yep. Yeah. Right, we now begin the recorded vote. Always to you.
Very much so. The motion is, the motion has been amended and accepted by councillor Green. It has been amended by councillor Collins. So when I call you, maybe you get your four against or stay on the motion. Baker?
Against.
Farrel?
Against.
Bell?
Against.
Benzer?
Against.
Benham?
Against.
Capper? Clark?
Against.
Collins?
For.
Depean?
Against.
Ellis Sargi?
For.
Evans?
Against.
Farrel?
For.
Goreley?
For.
Bruna?
Against.
Ruby?
For.
Hall?
Against.
Hardy?
For.
Hastings, that's a story.
Against.
Hopkinson?
For.
Addiston?
Against.
Inman?
Against.
Kirkham?
For.
Lomax?
For.
Matthew?
Against.
Anthony McEwan?
Against.
Bob McEwan?
Against.
Morton?
For.
Payne?
Against.
Quinn?
Against.
Ready?
For.
Roberts?
For.
Scott?
Against.
Sydall?
Against.
Sizer?
For.
Sloman?
Against.
Heather? Joe Taylor?
Against.
Matt Taylor?
Against.
Tom?
Against.
Your voting figures are thirty to fall in motion, twenty-four against in motion, so motion falls. Thank you very much. That concludes the business of this meeting of the council. Thank you very much, everybody, for your contribution and...